Good evening, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. My name is councillor Tony Page and I'm mayor of Reading and I chair these full council meetings. Welcome to them. First of all, this evening, I've got some announcements to make. Apologies for absence this evening. I've received from councillor Mitchell and councillor Emberson. Just check, there are no others? No. Sorry? Councillor O'Connell is running late. Well, good. Hopefully she makes it before we finish. Webcasting, I would like to inform everyone present that this meeting will be broadcast live on the internet and will be available for repeat viewing on the council's webcasting Colleagues, on the subject of Holocaust Memorial Day, I would like to invite the council to join me in a minute's silence in respect of Holocaust Memorial Day, which was on the 27th of January, and to provide a period of reflection for the victims of all the too many wars that are currently being waged around the world. I also wanted to provide an opportunity for the many councillors who were unable to attend the Holocaust Memorial Day event to pay their respects as well. So if you would please rise for a minute. Please be seated. Which leads me on to another somber and sad announcement, and that regards to former mayor, councillor Bett Tikner. Bett was not only a colleague and former mayor, but also a longstanding personal friend, and I was glad to see some of you at her funeral this morning. We worked closely together over the years to represent the interests of Abbey Ward and besides her obvious passion for Reading and supporting the Royal Berkshire Hospital and the local NHS, Bett was also a committed internationalist and a keen supporter of the refugee support group, of which she was a trustee for 10 years. Her enthusiasm and passion will be sadly missed. I would like to invite the council to join me in a further minute's silence in memory of and as a tribute to Bett. Can I just say to colleagues, you will be advised formally about this, but following discussions with Bett's family, we've agreed that a civic memorial event will be held in the Victoria Hall on the afternoon of Monday, the 13th of May. But formal notification of the timings and the details of that will obviously be circulated and there will be opportunity then for colleagues to say more about Bett's public service. Right, moving on then, are there any declarations of interest? Councillor Ennis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Number 10, item 10, Youth Justice Plan, page 113. I am one of the signatories from another organisation. Not sure if I have to leave.
Indeed.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Councillor Hacker?
Yep, same item. So I work for Parents and Children Together and part of that is Alana House, which is also mentioned in the Reading Youth Justice Plan.
Okay, any further declarations? No? Good, thank you. Minutes of the meeting held on the 17th of October 2023, can I sign them as a correct record? Good, thank you. Petitions, there are none. We have one public question from Dr Suneela Lobo to the lead councillor for Housing, but I understand in her absence, the leader of the council will be dealing with that question. Dr Lobo, would you like to come to the table? And when you're ready, if you could press the middle button and bring the microphone close to you, please.
Thank you, Mayor. It's about the licensing of houses in multiple occupation. In Redlands, there are a large number of houses in multiple occupation, with the ward having some of the town's highest levels of hazardous properties, antisocial behaviour and rubbish and recycling issues. Currently, only large HMOs containing at least five residents are covered by the National HMO Licensing Scheme. However, the majority of Redlands' HMOs are small terraced properties in the student area with up to four occupants. As they are classed as small HMOs, they do not currently require a licence. Other university towns, such as Oxford and Bristol, have successfully used HMO licensing to improve the standard of accommodation, take enforcement action to protect tenants and improve the condition of neighbourhoods. Will the lead councillor for Housing or her representative today support my campaign and introduce a licensing scheme for all HMOs in the east Reading area?
Councillor Brock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And in councillor Emberson's absence, I thank Dr Lobo for her question. The council currently operates a licensing scheme for larger houses in multiple occupation with five or more occupants, and this is the national mandatory licensing scheme. The Housing Act 2004 contains provisions for the council to designate discretionary licensing schemes, either for smaller houses in multiple occupation or for the private rented sector as a whole. Discretionary licensing is a tool which the council can use to improve conditions and management in the private rented sector. The corporate plan and the housing strategy commit the council to review evidence in relation to housing conditions and review the need for discretionary licensing schemes as part of wider actions to improve the quality and safety of housing for residents. Officers have commissioned a report to look at housing conditions across the private rented sector and related complaints about antisocial behaviour. The results of the survey are currently being assessed against the requirements of the Housing Act and will be reported to the Housing, Neighbourhoods and Leisure Committee, and I expect that a consultation into designating some discretionary licensing schemes will commence in due course. The aim of the schemes proposed is to drive change and provide better homes for our residents, which national evidence shows has positive impacts for health and for families and better educational outcomes.
Dr Lobo, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, I do. Thank you for your response, councillor Brock. I'm pleased the council is looking to introduce an expanded HMO licensing scheme. The private rented sector is an important source of accommodation in Reading, and there are many decent landlords in Reading. Can you please clarify what steps the council will be taking to consult and engage with landlords and perhaps other stakeholders as well while developing the new licensing scheme?
Councillor Brock?
A consultation element will be part of that report coming forward if indeed the HNL committee decides to adopt the officer recommendations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr Lobo. That concludes public questions. We now move on to the two councillor, three councillor questions. The first is from councillor Moore to the lead councillor for Corporate Services. Councillor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For some months, the council was recommending residents disable their web browser security settings to access the planning applications portal. I'm pleased to see this issue is now being fixed through the application for security certificates. However, in light of this poor advice, which is criticised by international security experts such as Troy Hunt, a well-known expert on digital security, and the recent cyber attack on Gloucester City Council, can the lead councillor for this area please explain what concrete steps the council is taking to prove to residents that it takes their cyber security and its own cyber security seriously, including achieving the cyber security certification? It is stated in the Street of Rights Register this would be achieved by end of 2022/2023, but as of writing this question, it has not been achieved according to the CyberEssentials certification website, and any NCSE, National Cybersecurity Centre, checks that may be taking place regularly.
Councillor Terry, can I remind you there's a five-minute limit on answers?
The council has established, has an established programme of work to address the growing and evolving threat of cyber attack, and a team including a dedicated cyber security officer supplemented with additional technical project resources in place to deliver that programme. The concrete steps being taken by that programme can be considered in three categories: the introduction of protective measures, active monitoring for threats and vulnerabilities, and the application of the best practice standards, including those set by the National Cybersecurity Centre. In the first of those categories, new protective measures introduced in the last two years include the implementation of new internet and email gateway products offering enhanced protection against external attack, the introduction of multi-factor authentication, I can't say it, for login to council systems to protect their security, the provision of secure public wifi at council buildings, including content filtering to ensure that content is safe and appropriate, implemented to government standards, including those set by Prevent, the introduction of mandatory annual cyber security training for staff, the definition of mandatory cyber security standards applied to the procurement of the new IT products and services, and the procurement of insurance against cyber security attack, a process which included an assessment by our insurers of the adequacy of our security controls. Turning to the second category, given the constantly involving nature of both technology and cyber threat, monitoring of threats and vulnerabilities is critical. We monitor and act on the following threat intelligence feeds which provide us with information about new types of attacks: the National Cybersecurity Centre early warning system, the same for cyber information sharing partnership, the South East Government Warning Advisory Reporting Point, and monitoring of the dark web provided by our cyber security insurers. We monitor our systems for vulnerabilities through penetration testing, the employment of experts who seek to defeat our protection mechanisms. We use two penetration testing providers. We have an annual penetration test undertaken by an independent external organisation with NCSE certification, an example of the regular NCSE checking mentioned in the question. In the most recent penetration test of our systems in January 24, the testers were unable to penetrate our systems and our warning systems successfully detected their attack attempts. This was a very strong result. The annual independent testing is supplemented by monthly penetration testing by the security team within our hosting and end-user computing provider, Agilysys. Turning finally to the category of best practice, we are targeting compliance with three levels of assurance. Firstly, we are compliant with the public sector network requirement set by the Cabinet Office. Such compliance is a prerequisite for connection to certain government systems, including those of the DWP. Compliance requires annual certification based on a detailed assessment of security controls, vulnerabilities and remediation plans against the constantly involving threat environment. Following a review of our submission to the Cabinet Office, they unconditionally renewed our PSN certificate in December 23, 2023, providing clear assurance of the strength of our cyber security position. Secondly, as the question notes, we are targeting compliance with the CyberEssentials standard, a significant undertaking for a large and complex organisation. We commissioned an independent assessment of our compliance with the standard in November 2023. This found that we were compliant to 90 out of the 96 controls in the standard. One of the non-compliance has already been addressed. Compliance with the other five is dependent on two things. The first dependency is the completion of in-flight projects that are replacing legacy applications which predate current security standards. Note that the risks associated with these are mitigated by the protective measures that were subject to the recent successful penetration test. The second dependency is the completion of a review of all web-based applications by council services, the need for which was introduced in the most recent update of the CyberEssentials standard. Risks in this area are limited to and do not involve any threat to any business critical systems. We are expecting both these dependencies to have been completed this summer. Finally, the council is one of eight councils that successfully applied to be part of the Department of Leveling Up Housing in Communities Future Councils Programme, which included piloting the application of the draft local government profile of the National Cybersecurity Centre cyber assurance framework. This is seen by Delac as the future required standard for local government. As part of that pilot, we are going through an independent assessment of our cyber security position against the new draft standard. That assessment is still in progress but has not so far identified the need for any remedial action that is not already in hand.
Can I ask councillor Moore if he's got a supplementary?
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your extensive answer, councillor Terry. I'm pleased to hear that the Cybersecurity Essentials certification is being actively worked on and I look forward to it being achieved later in the year. Since my question was submitted, in fact, only four days ago, the councils at Canterbury, Dover and Thanet confirmed they were jointly investigating a cyber incident on online services for residents on their websites. I'm disappointed, therefore, that the answer given does not address a specific concern around the recommendation from the council to disable browser security settings, especially as its unfortunate advice was also covered nationally in PC Pro magazine.
Councillor Moore, is there a question?
Yes, I'm answering it now. So I would like to ask specifically, will the council commit to not recommending residents to disable their browser security settings again to access online services?
Councillor Terry?
Thank you, councillor Moore. I just tried to decide with the very long supplementary information I've got, which is relevant really, I think that the point to say is the principal risk was that residents would fail to reinstate their security settings, rendering them more vulnerable when connecting to other sites. Our lessons learned review of that matter is examining whether more could have been done to prioritise resolution and how communications could have been better handled. So I think what we're saying is that you can have that assurance.
Thank you very much, which leads us on to the second question from councillor White to councillor Rowland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is on Greens urge the council to get on with glass recycling. Glass bottles pile up in front gardens and are then sometimes thrown into grey bins or dumped. Green councillors are again urging the council to bring forward a doorstep glass recycling scheme to boost recycling. How much glass is in the average grey bin in Reading? What progress has the council made on doorstep glass recycling recently? And when will the council be able to pick up glass from everyone's doorstep?
Councillor Rowland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to thank councillor White for his question, which allows me an excellent opportunity to update the public as to Reading's position with curbside glass recycling. Glass represents up to 5% of our overall 50% recycling rate. Despite our latest analysis indicating that only 4% of our grey bins and only 1.92% of our red bin contamination is glass, I do share your opinion that in an ideal world, these numbers would be at zero. I've taken the liberty of publishing below our annual bin infographic, which highlights greater recyclable waste issues in our bins beyond glass. I hope this alerts Green Party councillors to the real challenges we are facing with getting recyclable waste out of our recycling and residual waste bins. Reducing this recyclable waste can save significant money and reduce what is disposed of largely through Energy for Waste, or EFW. Labour councillors are committed to maximising recycling. Whilst we understand the desire for a curbside glass collection, we also recognise that our bottle banks around the borough are well-used by many residents and that service design needs careful thought to prevent a new issue of glass collection noise disturbing greater numbers of residents in the future. As the first town in this country to establish a comprehensive town-wide glass bank system in the late 1970s, we have 49 glass bank sites across the borough, as well as at small need. Whilst we understand curbside glass recycling will be appreciated by many, we always knew that there would be significant and potential costly changes to changing to a curbside glass collection. We know broken glass also plays havoc with vehicles, machinery and collection systems, requiring potentially expensive ongoing maintenance along the entirety of the collection stream route. Labour councillors have always appreciated that cost and along with our RE3 partners have chosen not to proceed until we knew the financial implications. I trust you will understand in the current financial climate this was a prudent path to take. By way of background, the Environment Act was passed on the 15th of November 2021. Finally, in late October 2023, the government published its response to the Consultation on Simpler Recycling, which included their long overdue requirement for curbside glass recycling. That government guidance stated it expects councils to provide residential curbside recycling from the 31st of March 2026. However, the financials of curbside glass recycling, which is the part we really need to understand, remains vague. It was advised that the first bit of funding to help us with that conversion will only begin to arrive in December 2025, a mere four months before this costly conversion and implementation is expected to be completed. Extenuating circumstances at the national government level aside, it is largely expected that the funding may fall short of the cost to fully implement the conversion. Along with Bracknell Forest and Wokingham Borough, we still see significant challenges in mounting an efficient and affordable glass collection service, while uncertainties remain about the funding. Given the financial implications and the relatively low level of contamination in comparison to other recyclables that we are working hard to drive down, I believe, councillor White, that patience is in this case a virtue. The RE3 board, with me serving as its current chair, received an update at our meeting on the 11th of January around the options to address this requirement. We could go the route alone without our partners, but we consider that our most financially wise position is to look at routes that we can take along with Wokingham and Bracknell to collectively share best practice and deliver economies of scale. These options will consider a wide range of alternatives, from collecting glass co-mingled with dry recycling to other separate collection stream alternatives. I will be delighted to provide an update on the council's position once the FCC and RE3 have had the opportunity to look at the best route for curbside glass collections and once we and our partners have had a chance to consider our best and wisest options. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rowland. Do you have a supplementary, councillor White?
Disappointed that we're going to have to wait to 2026, but no supplementary.
Go on, councillor Singh, if it's genuine supplementary.
My supplementary is Reading Labour's own manifesto, five years ago, mentioned about introducing curbside recycling. Do you regret misinforming Reading residents?
Thank you, councillor Singh. I think that given the financial implications that we have got, that taking wise financial decisions with a system that works very well is the wisest course of action. So I don't regret. I think that we are being financially prudent in a very difficult climate and I'm sure that you're abundantly aware of the challenges that your party has given to us. Thank you.
I was being very indulgent and I regret now so doing, councillor Singh, because that wasn't by any stretch of the imagination a proper supplementary, but there we are. We'll give you a tutorial later on that. Let's move on to the final question this evening from councillor White to the leader of the council. Councillor White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is on Israel-Gaza War and Council Action. Greens are deeply concerned about the tens of thousands of civilian deaths in Gaza from Israel's military action. We condemn the terrible Hamas attack of 7th October. Greens support an immediate lasting ceasefire in Gaza and the return of all hostages. We were disappointed that neither Matt Rodder MP nor Alex Sharma MP supported the ceasefire motion in November. Previously, at the 27th January 2009 full council meeting, it was resolved as part of councillor Lovelock's amended Israeli invasion of Gaza motion to look at the council's purchasing and other policies to bring pressure to bear on governments that breach international law and companies that knowingly facilitate such breaches. Please can we get an update on what action was taken following this motion and what the council plans to do on this in the future?
Councillor Brock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to provide an update on this. Since that council meeting, Reading Borough councillors continue to enforce all legislation in respect of its purchasing and procurement activity pertaining to international law. This includes subsequently introduced legislation, including the EU Public Contract Regulations of 2015, as amended the Bribery Act of 2010 and the Modern Slavery Act of 2015. We continue to ensure that companies who supply our goods or services have not been convicted of criminal offences, including terrorist offences, money laundering, frauds, child labour or human trafficking. All these areas are key to the principles of upholding international law. We have recently updated our contract procurement rules to ensure we continue to adhere to UK government purchasing and procurement policies, including the UK National Procurement Policy Statement and applicable procurement policy notices. In October this year, the UK Procurement Act 2023 is expected to come into effect, and this will enhance our ability to deliver policy through our procurement activity by way of mandating the integration of policy aims into our contract specifications and being clear on our expectations of our suppliers in supporting such policy aims. The council will continue to develop these approaches and to work with a supply base that continues to align to the ambitions that it holds.
Councillor White, do you have a supplementary? My apologies. That concludes questions from councillors and we now move on to item seven, which is the council tax empty and second homes premiums. Councillor Brock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for some years, colleagues will all be aware that the council has been levying an empty homes premium in terms of council tax. Recent legislation has allowed us to now implement that premium earlier and to have a higher maximum threshold, but also we are anticipating that in the future we will be able to implement a second homes premium and we need to provide rather more notice of that. So this report seeks to bring our empty homes premiums, such as they currently are, in line with what we can do with the new legislation, whilst at the same time providing that statement of intent around the application of a second homes premium moving forward. Now, I believe that both of these things are incredibly important as statements of intent, but also as part of the package of measures that we wish to do, implement here in Reading, to discourage homes from sitting empty, whether that is simply through lack of use or because they are being used as second homes. And where these homes do continue to sit empty or they continue to be used as second homes, it is right that we should be able to seek additional compensation from those property owners so that we might use that for the social benefit of our town to mitigate the adverse impact of having empty homes in Reading during a housing crisis. to mitigate the adverse impact of having empty homes in Reading during a housing crisis. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Terry.
I second and reserve my right, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Look, councillor White.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, we will be supporting this. There's a housing crisis in Reading. I think we'll all agree. There's too many homes sitting empty and anything we can do to get them back into use should be supported.
Thank you councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I echo what councillor White has said. It is important that we support this, especially given the homeless situation at present. Having houses and homes that are empty is not benefiting anybody. So the sooner we can put this into action, the better. We will be supporting. Thank you.
Councillor Moore.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just want to ask a quick question on this and it wasn't quite clear for me with this. Will this be retrospectively applied or future applied in terms of the year criteria?
Councillor Brock or councillor Terry will pick that up. I see no further indications. Councillor Terry, do you want to speak? Nope. Okay, councillor Brock, wind up.
It's a good question and I'm not sure I wholly follow it, but you can't apply these things retrospectively, but the dates from which the homes are empty still continues to track forward. So if a home has been empty for three years at the date that this policy comes into play, it should, as I understand things, be eligible for the maximum premium that applies in that case. But otherwise, happy to see that this is unanimous support, Mr Mayor.
On that basis, can I see all those in favour? Good, that's unanimous. Thank you very much, which takes us on to item eight, which is the approval of the local council tax support scheme and the council tax base for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Councillor Brock.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A largely administrative report in terms of setting the council tax base, a calculation that we have to undertake every year, always has to come to full council in January, exactly as we are doing tonight and colleagues will be very familiar with this. It is also, of course, at the moment at which we confirm our council tax support scheme for the forthcoming year, which colleagues will remember we enhanced a couple of years ago now. Pleased to say that despite the budget pressures that are familiar to all local authorities across the country, we are able to retain that scheme and of course we will also be retaining separately as part of the budget the additional grant that we pay to those in receipt of council tax support. But that is to be discussed clearly next month rather than tonight, so happy to move as printed, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Terry.
I second and reserve my right, Mr Mayor.
Anybody pitching in on this? Councillor Robinson?
Only just to say we're happy to support the motion and the recommended action.
Thank you. Nobody else? Councillor Terry? Nope. Councillor Brock?
Delighted that we seem to be heading for unanimous support here as well.
On that basis, can I see all those in favour, please? Unanimous. Thank you very much, which takes us on to item nine, which is the review of the Statement of Gambling Licensing Principles. Councillor Rowland.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This item, the review of the Statement of Gambling Licensing Principles, is coming before full council this evening as a requirement under the two thousand and five Gambling Act that requires the council to review and approve its gambling policy every three years. Gambling establishments, casinos and betting shops that are well run in Reading are licensable businesses that form a portion of our vibrant leisure offer here in this town and part of our well-run night time economy. Our licensing team at Reading Borough Council sets out the structure in which those businesses are licensed and ensures that they are run in order to protect children and other vulnerable people from harm, to ensure that gambling does not contribute to crime or disorder and to ensure that gambling is conducted in a fair and open way. Our Statement of Gambling Licensing Principles sets out those policies and the policy before you this evening is a regular review of our policy with no major changes, save those as highlighted in point three, point four of the covering report. Those changes simply ensure that all future applicants refer additionally to any stipulations that may be set out within the local plan, either now or in the future, as that policy is being reviewed in the next year. We accept well-run betting shops and casinos that meet the requirements of this policy as a portion of this town's wider leisure offerings. The establishments we do currently have adhere well to our policies and with your approval of the statement this evening, we are setting out those guidelines to ensure those establishments and future ones will continue to have a healthy relationship within our leisure offering for Reading. Mr Mayor, I am happy to move as printed.
Thank you. Councillor Woodward.
Second and reserve, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Keane.
Thank you. Just to say, yes, we will be supporting this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nope. Oh, sorry, councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yet likewise, we will be supporting this. It's good to see that within this industry of gambling that there are firm guidelines and requirements for gambling companies and organisations to follow and happy to back this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Robinson. Another indicator, councillor Woodward, do you want to? Nope. Councillor Rowland?
I'm happy to also see general support and I'm moved that we get on with this one. Thank you.
But anyway, all right, let's. Can I see all those in favour of the review? Again, unanimous. Right, which takes us on then to item ten. I'm advised by Mr Graham that councillors Ennis and Hacker should really leave in the basis of the interest. I'm happy to invite Mr Graham to say any more if you require any. No, okay, they're going willingly. We'll hope to remember to let you know when we're finished. Right. Councillor Hoskin to move.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And yeah, I really welcome this report. It's an unusual report in the sense that this was signed off by the Youth Justice Board in June of last year and came to our Adults Children's Education Committee, as discussed there as well. It was identified though that the Youth Justice Plan had never been to a, had a council outing and we absolutely believe that's the right thing to do, the transparency around this and also because it's an incredibly important piece of work. If I've got anything to do with it, if I achieve anything, I'll hopefully get the timetables aligned better for next year. So you'll be seeing this, the next iteration much sooner. The, I welcome the reports and I think we should endorse it and and take it on board for information. It identifies the right areas, particularly because it identifies the right areas for action. If you've had a look at the stats and the graphs on that, I think it's a readable report, which is good as well. It clearly lays out how the partnership has been, we've done really quite, really performs well in terms of reoffending, reducing reoffending across the board and that's laid out there. Where we're less successful in Reading is about reducing first time entrance into the justice system and there is this issue about disproportionality around engagement, involvement in the youth justice system. And because like, you know, at the end of the day, I'm sure we all agreed that really what you want to do is to avoid children, young people becoming part of the system as well. We all know about the statistics that when you become part of that, how it affects your future life chances. And also for all of us, how it increases the likelihood of future criminal activities. So, you know, this is a, it's a good plan in terms of identifying the right areas to address and prioritise. I think this is also really good and welcome to see an emphasis on the voice of the child. I think it's really important that we remember we're talking about children. I think sometimes it's easy to forget about that when you see, when there's criminal behaviour amongst the under eighteen, but we are talking about children and we, it's actually evidenced in the work here and it's evidence that taking an approach of remembering we're talking about children, looking at rehabilitation and looking at ways of diverting away from criminal activities is the way to go. Punitive action doesn't work, makes things worse and I think that's laid out well here. That's the child-first approach. Also, the voice of the child is important. I think it's emphasised here how involving children, young people, those involved in the system in terms of what we do and how we support people. I mean, I think in lots of ways that the, this isn't just about Reading. The youth justice system is, well, I think it's pretty much the best functioning element of the justice system at the moment and that's because it is a local partnership approach to dealing with really knotty problems and individual problems because every, every child is an individual. And I think in lots of ways, I think this shows the way the rest of the rest of the justice system should really be working, but our element is to make sure that we are fully engaged as a partner in this body and that we fully play our part in delivering the system which I, you know, which we do. I think, I mean, I will, I suppose this might be a bit political, but I think it is worth saying one of the hopes, I think, for the future is I think we're all now realising that the, how disastrous the sort of last fourteen years of austerity and council funding cuts has been. And we see, you know, right across the country, the decimation of youth and community services and the kind of stuff that we as a council, actually councils of all political stripes across the country used to do, which was about basically supporting young kids, young people to become adults and supporting away from criminal activity or just ways in terms of really fully unleashing their potential. You know, the cuts to councils and council youth services, we said at the time and absolutely proven to be the case, were a massive false economy. Hopefully, a future government will change course. It's a really positive words coming out of the Labour Party movement in terms of young future hubs, like hubs for young adults, about diverting activity. I think that's something that this agenda and our council's agenda can work really well with in terms of developing but huge challenges ahead to turn around that ship because it has been a terrible time for youth and community services in this country. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Hoskin. Councillor McPoofa Coles, do you want to?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I second and reserve. Thank you.
Right. Sorry, councillor Crestwell.
Thank you, Chair. And thanks for bringing this report. It's clear and gives a good view of the important work that the Youth Justice Service does. I'd like to briefly revisit the issue we discussed when it was brought to ACE in the autumn, which was the disproportion, disproportionality in the racial splits of stop and search, where we have black adolescents being twice as likely to be stopped and searched as white adolescents. It would be good if in future reports we could have statistics of the offences and the kind of success or failure of those stops and searches to know, to be able to pick apart that a little bit. And it would be good in future plans to see more concrete measures aimed at either reducing that disproportionality or explaining it.
Thank you councillor Crestwell. Any other? Councillor Robinson?
Is it working? No. Thank you, Mr Mayor. We too endorse this report and thank the officers for all the hard work and effort that's gone into it. I'm not going to be political, unlike others maybe this evening. But, you know, the Youth Justice Plan is a means to an end in terms of ensuring that, you know, our youth gets the best opportunities. Yes, occasionally things go wrong and, you know, people end up on the wrong side of the road, as it were to say. But this is an excellent piece of work that will hopefully go a long way in terms of bringing successful outcomes in the future. So we certainly endorse this and are happy to vote in favour.
Thank you councillor Robinson. Any other speakers before I? Nope. The seconder, would she like to exercise her right now?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, councillor Hoskin, do you want to wind up?
Yeah, just to say, appreciate the comments and councillor Crestwell is quite right. I think we discussed it, didn't we? The, the work against that priority will obviously come back to the next report and I think we spoke to officers about fleshing that out in terms of that work. It is a really important piece and councillor Robinson, I'm sorry, I felt a bit political. Actually, Conservative councillors will tell you much the same in private that we speak to another authorities, have seen their services decimated. They're not happy about it either, but hopefully as a country we can turn the corner and start to rebuild. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Hoskin. Can I see all those in favour of the justice plan? Again, unanimous. Thank you very much. Could we call back the two? Just wait a tick before, which takes us on to item. She's not used that word so often for years. Well, presumably. So is John with you? It's teeth. All right. Right. Let, let us move on to item eleven, the pay policy statement for twenty-three, twenty-four. And councillor Terry.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is an annual policy pay, a pay policy statement that comes to us as required by the Localism Act twenty-eleven. It's broadly unchanged from previous year's statement, other than being updated for the recently nationally agreed pay settlements. I move as printed.
Councillor Brock?
I second and reserve my right.
Any speakers on this? Still support paying our staff over here? Good, fine. Good. Okay. Well, there's nobody spoken, nobody to reply then. Can I see all those in favour? Again, unanimous. Thank you very much, which takes us on to item twelve, which is the council's allowances scheme for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Councillor Brock.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Colleagues will recall that a few years ago, about four years ago now, we made major changes to our councillor allowances scheme, which brought it from being the very lowest in the country into something much more reasonable, although still the lowest in Berkshire in terms of special responsibility allowances. I'm delighted that the remuneration panel, which is an independent body, has recommended that we retain the scheme as is with the same index linking. So retaining that scheme first set four years ago for another year. And that's all I have to say and I move that the recommendations set out in appendix be adopted. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Terry.
Yes, I second and reserve my right, Mr Mayor.
Any speakers on this? Nope. In which case, as did most speakers, no need to reply. Can I see all those in favour? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Which then takes us on to the final item, which is the motion on Reading Football Club, which councillor Ennis is moving. Councillor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Motion on Reading Football Club. On Saturday, the thirteenth of January this year, against Port Vale, Reading football supporters totally fed up, totally desperate at the way our club, Reading FC, one of the oldest in the world, formed in eighteen seventy-one, the oldest club south of the Trent, was being run into the ground by the current owners, the owner, Di Young, with players sold for nothing, deliberately not paying wages, deliberately not paying the tax. They decided to take back control and protest on the pitch to get the match. They decided to take back control and protest on the pitch to get the match abandoned so their cry for help could go nationwide. And this has happened only once previously, in my knowledge, against, I think it was Blackpool, did it with the same situation of their owners. It's unprecedented. It's something that Reading fans have never done. We don't, we're not used to protesting. We're one of the more middle-class clubs, as others would tell us. But we have said enough is enough. Reading fans, Reading supporters will not lie down and let our famous old club die. And we must record our thanks and support and appreciation to the great campaign that's been formed, a female-dominated campaign in the world of football, which is sometimes male-dominated. Caroline Parker and Sarah Turner of the Supporters' Trust, brilliantly led by them, getting nationwide media coverage, good protests, tennis balls, all sorts of stuff. You know, getting the government and the EFL to sit up and take notice. And they've gone to many ways and methods to try and get our story across at the way the owners want to run the club to make it insolvent and liquidate it and end it. He's got a history of that. He's done it to two other clubs and we're not prepared to be the third. We've had solidarity from other teams. I mean, you talk about football fans and you see it on the media, supporters' hooliganism and violence, but I can tell you now, I was there as a season ticket holder and the Port Vale fans were absolutely fantastic. They'd been there themselves, as have Leyton Orient, who were there last week, absolutely superb, totally understand to drive, you know, from the North Midlands to have the game abandoned, they totally got it and they were totally onside. And in fact, as a result of that, Reading fans have donated to a Port Vale charity to the extent of over £10,000. So there is solidarity from other teams and football supporters at the way football is being currently run. Leyton Orient, another club last week, also were in full support, a club that's known bad times. There is a coalition of football supporters in solidarity at the way football ownership is going. And we have a coalition of politicians as well, must place our thanks to Matt Rodder, MP, for his support in getting the discussion in Parliament and moving forward to meet the EFL and the government as well to request that they act. And we must thank James Sutherland, Conservative MP for Bracknell, even though politically thoroughly oppose him. Really thank him for his passionate, ongoing and genuine support of Reading FC and the work that he's done has been very important. So I say to the Conservative group, please pass on our thanks. Obviously, we won't be voting for him, but it's very thankful that he has got involved in that and pushed forwards. This motion requests that the chief executive, I know you're not an expert on VAR or the offside rule, but to write to the EFL and the soon-to-be, hopefully, independent regulator to act, because Reading is the canary in the mine. It's the canary in the mine that many clubs will follow because football has an ownership problem. And we say to you on the time I've got left.
You've got 30 seconds, councillor.
Why does Reading, why does it matter? Why bring it here? Because it's our community. We go there, 16,000 were there on Saturday. It's our community. We don't really care about the result. I've been going since 1976. It's my club. It's my town. I believe in it. You can go and support all your Premier League clubs and have your glory and whatever, but it's going there and seeing people you know for years, you sit with, you with, and you go to work with, you go to school with, and you know, and you go to the pub or whatever. It's our club. That's why it's our interest as a council. We need to be involved. We are a family. We are a community. Results don't matter, glory don't matter. I've got another 30 seconds. Not interested in the Premier League. It's our club. It's your community. You represent your communities as representatives. So you should support this motion and do what you can to support the campaign to save Reading FC and get back to a successful and sustainable club that we know we can be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Barnett Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, councillor Ennis is absolutely right. Football has an ownership problem. I don't care whose name is on the paperwork. Reading belongs to Reading. It's our team. It's our club. Whether you've got people who, like John, have got a season ticket, and I know we've got other colleagues here who are there, week in, week out, year after year, decade after decade, we've got generations of supporters in this town who are there, supporting their team, supporting their club, building a community. That is who the football club belongs to. That is who has got the pride in the club. The wider town, even if we're not there every week, we celebrate when the team does well, we commiserate when it does badly. It's a point of pride in our town and that pride is being chipped away. This is not how I want our team or our town to be represented and it's because of the faulty way that football is owned in this country. I'm delighted that we brought this forward. I'm honoured to be able to second this motion tonight. And I'm so pleased that councillor Ennis singled out the fantastic women who've been leading this campaign. The fans have been amazing. Sarah Turner, Caroline Parker, all the fans are giving up their time, giving up their passion, their love of the club to fight for it and not let it die. And we pursue all that we can to support them. So I call on everyone here in the council to support the motion and I call on Die Young to sell before we die.
Thank you, councillor Barnett Ward. I've got four speakers down, councillors Lang, Robinson, Williams and Davis. So councillor Thompson, right, fine, and councillor Rock. Okay. Councillor Lang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, how do I follow such passionate speeches from season ticket holders? No, no, no. So colleagues, I'm grateful to councillor Ennis for bringing this motion and for councillor Barnett Ward for seconding. I'm grateful too to councillor Ennis and the leadership and the officers involved in securing the ACV, Asset of Community Value, for the stadium. It shows that the council will do everything it can to support the fans in their endeavour to secure the future of the club. The message from this motion should be that this council, in its entirety, stands full heartedly behind the fans. Indeed, some of us have the honour of being invited to stand at the front with the Sell Before We Die banner and take part in the march from Blue Collar Marketplace down to the stadium along the A33 bus route. It came in well handy that day. So that was good, yes. So the fact I'm not seconding this motion, but this sort of changed really, because I was going to put a personal perspective on it, but they both did anyway, so I'll stay where I am. The fact I'm not seconding this motion also gives me the opportunity to express my feelings as a football fan. I fell out of love, unlike John, not with John, sorry, I fell out of love with football. Fell out of love with football years ago, not with the football or indeed the results. I physically puked a loss and I cried with a victory. I fell out of love because of the greed. Don't be confused to say I'm talking about the players, many from working class backgrounds, getting paid what they only deserve or do deserve, but the corporate greed, the commoditisation of everything that has become so common in our modern economies. We talk about the footballification of politics. Politics has a lot in common with football. A team player will flourish and of course we will have our tribal loyalties. The EFL should take a lesson from us. If we don't succeed or we don't come up to scratch, we are answerable to the electorate. Who owes the EFL to account at this moment? It's not the fans. So there's a lesson on integrity. There's a lesson that politicians can also learn from football. It's something that football does very well and it's something that's very close to my heart. Communitarianism, you've already mentioned it before at planning on several occasions. It's the truest expression, the assertion that people are social beings needing connections that are carefully built over time. Social democracy, that's our side, can only work if it convinces people that they are part of something together. I think football achieves this very well. Just a quick comment on the pitch protest. I don't condemn it in any way. In fact, I support it. I do have sympathy, particularly for the schoolchildren, that would have been at half-time events, but I'm sure that the club will obviously fit them in on another day. So I can say, I'd have been on that pitch if I was there. I was away on the Isle of Wight, having a nice little break over there. British seaside's the best. But if Boris Johnson can say, join the army at 59, yeah, I can say that I'd certainly be on the pitch and I would. I thank the fans personally for reigniting my passion for football. I've become a bit of a regular down there, Johnny come lately compared to Johnny boy. But like we all say, we only really appreciate something when we think we're going to lose it forever. I support this motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lang. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to begin by thanking councillor Ennis for proposing this motion this evening with such passion and emotion. It was indeed a great surprise this evening to learn that he is a diehard Reading fan, as he has never given away any clues as to what team he supports and neither has he ever said he's Reading born and bred. Certainly an excellent contestant for the next series of the traitors. Anyway, it will come as no surprise that we thoroughly endorse this motion and will of course be voting in favour. The ownership of Reading Football Club under Die Young has been nothing short of an unmitigated disaster. The ownership of a football club is a huge responsibility and not just a status symbol for the mega wealthy, in that you need to seriously invest in it and its future. This has not happened in the case of Reading, with fines being levied by the EFL for failures to pay taxes, players' wages and comply with the conditions applied to all clubs in their financial dealings. These failures and fines don't just affect Die but the team, the coaches, the backroom staff and above all the key stakeholders being the army of fans who buy season tickets or page in every week to watch and support their team loyally. The EFL, though, should reflect on their involvement in this sorry tale, in that they passed Die Young and his company Rene as a fit and proper owner, allowing him to take a 75% stake back in May 2017, despite the last club he owned, which was Beijing Rene in China, going under the year before. We don't want the same to happen again, as faced by Barberry and by Maccusfield, who went under thanks to poor ownership and bad financial management. Reading Football Club is a very important part of our town and its history, so we can't stand by and see it fail and fall. There is no doubt that fans of Reading are passionate about the club and are sending a very clear message that a new owner is needed, one that will care, invest in the club and has the vision to take Reading back up into the Premier League. And we hope this will happen soon. I urge you all to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Robinson. Councillor Williams?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to councillor Ennis for putting this before us this evening, only briefly from me, because I'm sure we do all support this. I'm not, I'm not going to pretend to fully understand the world of finance in football. In fact, the opposite, I genuinely don't understand finance in football. I don't know who the new owner should be. I do know it shouldn't be this one. It's clear the fans are right and the club has to be sold. But I also agree with councillor Robinson, it's not clear on the point of writing to the EFL. Back in 2017, they had no objections to the takeover of the club, no objections, but they did insist on enhanced financial monitoring to ensure that performance was consistent with the application they'd considered. Perhaps ask them in the letter how that worked out. It's time they stepped up for the good of the game. Although I do know that the EFL met recently with a number of supporters groups and an MP, not a Reading MP, but a Reading fan, as councillor Ennis pointed out. So hopefully, something positive will come from that. I just wanted to say, I'd wanted to add, me and my family recently went to a Reading FC women's match. It was fantastic, Mr. Mayor. The atmosphere was incredibly family-friendly. The tickets were not too expensive, which was also good. The football was excellent. And that team, along with the men's and the youth teams, are being dragged down by a failure not of the players on the pitch, but of the owner off the pitch. It's so important the next generation can watch that amazing women's team. The club is important to a lot of people, as councillor Ennis said, for a lot of different reasons. So putting aside the detailed wording of the motion for a minute, with all its letters to people, the spirit of the motion that councillor Ennis has put before us is that we stand as a council, shoulder to shoulder with our residents, with our town and with our club, and we fully support that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Councillor Davis?
Can you pass several over just because this probably won't work either? Can you? Oh, right, this is working. Okay, all right. I was going to say I've been rather interrupted, but just before I start on the point of following on from what councillor Williams said about going to watch the women's team under this ownership, I might remind you, the women's team's been downgraded from a professional team to a semi-professional team. Just one of the problems that have been experienced in this ownership. I don't have very much difference to say from what the other members who've spoken, but I did want to put my name publicly to this. I've been going to Reading with my son since he was seven and he's now got his own season ticket and he goes with his mates. And when he goes with his mates, he sits with people who are 20, 30, 40, 50 years older than him, of all different colours, creeds, genders, ages, professions, whatever. They'll sit all around him and they all have common cause. And that's what a football team's about. It's about bringing the town together. It's an extremely valuable and almost unique institution that Reading has, a town's football club is, and Reading is no different to that. Reading is a special one, in fact. It's been going for 153 years. Just the, some of the things that Reading has suffered, some of the issues that have suffered under this ownership, I'm reading now from the manifesto, Sell Before We Die. The huge financial losses, the ridiculous and unsustainable wages to turnover ratio, three relegations of the women's, men's and academy team, the academy being downgraded, the women's team being downgraded to semi-professional. All the charges, all the points deductions, all the fines and probably worst of all, the winding up petition by HMRC over unpaid tax bills. That's what's gone on. That's what we're talking about in case people haven't been fully all over this story. And there's a genuine risk at the moment. And I commend the, as other members have done, Sell Before We Die and other fan groups, because they're, in this scenario, they're acting as, if you like, the kind of guardians of a spirit of something very, very, very important to our town. So we should, we should look up to them, thank them and commend them, as we're doing in this motion. I want to mention that Labour and the Keir Starmer has committed to support in principle an independent football regulator. This is an absolute case in point where we can see that, that we're crying out for a need for some external bodies, some government body to be able to make sure that the owners who come in with no intention to make the football club successful, for whatever motives they've got to buy football clubs, can't just destroy decades, centuries-long institutions of a town like Reading Football Club. I urge us all to support, and I think we are all going to support, anything we can do to get the current owner out of the club. If the EFL can do it, brilliant. But let's urge anyone we can, and the EFL seems to be the people who might be able to do it, get him out, get someone else in who cares about the club like we do and can take us forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to also thank councillor Ennis for bringing this motion and to second what our fellow councillors have said. I'd just like to add to more points, just, well, to reinforce what was said, that Reading is about community and football is about community first and foremost. And there's one, just small aspect of that that cropped up in a report at this meeting, and that's the work of Reading Football Community Trust. And they work with young people and they were mentioned in the justice report. And this is just one of the, yet another reason, if we needed it, why as a council we need to support our club and support the fans as they fight to save the club. And I'd also just like to say, from my own experience, I was living and working aboard when Reading were in the Premier League and I appreciate, I'm no great fan of the I'm no great fan of the Premier League itself and what it is, but Reading's Premier League status put the town on the map. People would used to ask me, "Oh, where do you live in? Oh, oh, Reading, where's Reading? Oh, west of London, Reading. Oh, oh, Reading, Reading, oh, premiership, yes, Reading." So it really does, which has maybe immeasurable, some benefits but difficult to quantify, but it does put the town on the map, as well as giving people, our people, a sense of pride in Reading. So all power to Sell Before We Die and to this motion.
Thank you councillor Thompson. councillor Moore, then councillor Hacker.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. On Saturday, a good friend of mine invited me to join him to watch his cousin play for Beards and Oak Town versus Winchester City for a day out. It struck me from looking around that non-league ground, the passion and the strength of the fans of both teams, even at that lower level of the football pyramid, the exhilaration, the heartbreak and the half-time boffers. Football clubs aren't just sport, they are a part of the fabric for our community. And I'd like to thank councillor Ennis for proposing this motion. I know he is a passionate, lifelong fan of Reading FC, and I'm sure he and the rest of the fans are feeling like part of their community fabric is being ripped away. I think the situation is disgraced for all the reasons that were given out this evening, so I fully support this motion. I really do hope the situation improves to save our town's football club from any further negative future consequences, because it has to be preserved both for now and for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Moore. councillor Hacker.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I didn't think we could finish this without mention of the historical home of Reading Football Club, and that's at the heart of Battle Ward. In my view, Reading has five very great Bs. So we've got beer, biscuits, bricks, bulbs and of course battle, and Elm Park, right in the centre of it, where Reading football played for so many years. I have such happy memories as a child, listening to the roars from Elm Park, coming over the Wilson playing fields into our back garden. And for many years, my sister and my father were season ticket holders, dad and I had politics, dad and my sister had Reading Football Club. So it is heartbreaking to see what's been happening to the club nowadays. I went a couple of times as mayor, it was a bit awkward once, because Derby were playing and that's where I was born, but I kept neutral, that was important, I was wearing the chain. So I just want to give, from Battle Ward, the full support to the organisation Sell Before We Die. Reading Football Club is part of Reading, it is our history, as much as those bulbs and biscuits and bricks and beer. It would be an absolute disaster to see that club fold. And where's Ted Lasso when you need him? We need him now. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hacker. I've seen no other indications. councillor Ennis to wind up.
Three minutes. A bit more than that, mate.
Up to five.
Thank you very much for everybody. I really do think it was excellent contributions across the political divide, and I really thank everybody for making them contributions. I think you've been absolutely spot on, councillor Thompson, councillor Williams, councillor Hacker, councillor Moore. You've been absolutely spot on. You know, it did put the town on the map. Excellent contribution for councillor Robinson and thank you for that.
Councillor Ennis, could you bring your, think colleagues having a bit, your mumbling a bit, which is rare.
I've got to start again here, haven't I?
No, you carry on.
Excellent contribution from councillor Robinson. And I was going to sum up and say that, just to let people know for the first time. I was also going to mention that I was born in the council house, but I won't bother with that now. I'll leave that. But I think if you look at Reading, Reading was a trailblazer, the best academy. You will now see players going and leaving will be playing for England. Two of them have left, under-19s, I think they'll be playing for England. You know, it's one of the best grounds. Our women's team is a trailblazer, was a trailblazer. Two players played for England, including Fran Kirby, who was England's best player, one of the best, and was a, and is a world-class player. She was born and read in Reading and played for Reading and now plays for Chelsea. Now what you've got in the Premier League is all the big clubs have arrived. Reading was in the Premier League of women, and I used to go along and watch it, and still do, from time to time when they're in the Premier League, far before your Chelseas, your Man Cities and your Liverpools, they were nowhere. But of course, the World Cup, the Women's World Cup, they've all cashed in. Reading have cashed out because of this owner, and we had one of the best women's teams in the country, it was world-class. You know, councillor Williams is absolutely right. The idea, you know, the financing is, is when you get quite successful, like we were getting, and Hull and other teams, West Brom are in trouble, vultures, economic vultures, you know, it is capitalism at its most extreme, come in and cash out. And the idea of this motion is to join with the campaign, Sell Before We Die, and link in with them to show that the council is interested, and to put the EFL under pressure, because you're absolutely right. They, the Premier League wouldn't allow him to, to own a club, Hull City, but the EFL did a week later. And I think, I'll finish by saying, you know, does it matter? Does football matter? I've heard people say, not here of course, but does it matter? And of course it matters, because councillor Thompson made the point I was going to make, is that when we were successful, we were on the map. And if you look at it, the number of times when we've been to Wembley, 41,000. One of the biggest elements to support Wembley was in the Simod Cup in 1988, when there were 41,000 Reading fans there, half the, you know, the town or whatever, you know, so it does matter. And I think it does make us all the more better. So we've got a campaign for a successful club, and anything we can do, you can do to support that campaign would be great, because we need to keep our club wherever we are, wherever we land, in National League, League Two, as long as we survive, we fight to keep it, because we can only get better. I don't think we'll go down, because Reading is fully behind the campaign, and we'll make sure we don't, and we'll make sure that we win in the end with a bit of solidarity. So thanks for the support across the political coalition to make sure Reading survives. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much councillor Ennis, and to all the colleagues who've spoken this evening. Can I see all those in favour? Again, unanimous, a clean sweep. We'll see whether that unanimity extends to the next council meeting. So thank you all for your attendance this evening. I declare the meeting closed.